We're starting with a public hearing to consider a proposed resolution to authorize the mayor of the village of Baldensville to execute and submit an application to the county of Onadaga for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant.
Please take notice that the Baldensville Village Board will hold a public hearing on April 4, 2024, at 7:35 or soon thereafter, as can be heard at the village hall to receive public comments on the proposed adoption of updates to the village comprehensive plan. A copy of the comprehensive plan amendments is available for public inspection in the village clerk's office at 16 West Genesee Street, Baldensville, New York, 13027 during regular business hours. At the above date, time and place, all interested parties will be heard. The village hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. If special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments, or those in need of translation from English, those individuals should contact the village clerk at 315-635-3521 at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may be submitted until April 1, 2024, to the village clerk at 16 West Genesee Street, Baldensville, New York, 13027. By order of the Baldensville Board of Trustees, dated March 21, 2024, Baldensville, New York.
Is anyone speaking in favor of the proposal? Anyone speaking in opposition to the proposal?
I didn't have a chance to see what the proposal is exactly.
Five.
The summary?
It's got five components to it. I could go through those if you'd like. And each one is arranged one at a year, and they're submitted to Onadaga County. They will select anything out of there or nothing. It isn't they're going to take the first one or the second one. Last year's plan, for example, they took the second one, which is putting in handicap accessible picnic tables and paving the walkway in McCary Park. What I put down here for the first one is to enhance pedestrian safety through the completion of the trail that goes to Community Park and addition of sidewalks along the east side of Phillips Street and East Onida Street. What this would do is complete the community trail. If you know where the trail to Community Park, it starts, the trailhead starts, this would link across Canal Lands, and I had put in for a permit to Water Street where there'd be a crosswalk so that somebody would not have to travel through the parking lot to try and find the beginning of the trail. The sidewalks proposed are in the two areas that qualify for community develop money. If you think of East Onida Street, we stop at Phillips. There's no sidewalks from Phillips until you get to the little point park, like just like three houses that would connect them so that the system would be complete. The other possibility is going down one side of Phillips Street out to the village line, be about six, seven houses. So those folks are now connected to the sidewalk system. That's number one. Number two was improvements to the community park trailhead parking area. Currently, if you're familiar with it, it's run across stuff. We've proposed paving part of it, at least enough for eight spaces, at least half of those would be handicapped because the trail is ADA accessible, but the parking lot is a little short of that. So we have some paved parking spaces and lighting that would make that parking area more accessible for evening events within the village, more usable. Third thing was an improvement to the existing Crooked Brook Trail that's within Community Park. If you're familiar with that park, many people aren't familiar with the fact, there is a little trail that wanders off through the woods and goes around the perimeter. This is something that was proposed by our village engineer a few years ago, and we've kept it in there, would be to widen it slightly, make it, remove trip hazards and put a paved surface on it. So now strollers, walkers, people with limited capabilities walking would have an easier time down there. Fourth thing, this is one for Jim Miller, is to replace the aged existing sidewalk along Tappan Street adjacent to the River View Cemetery. And the fifth thing is something that we always put in is the extension of the Southwest Trail, which ends at the wall. And in the future, we'd love to see it going down Gentry Street to Tappan and far off, linking maybe to the Little League Fields Shopping Area. Those are the five. The maximum that can be awarded is $50,000.
I was just wondering if the sidewalk, the sidewalk by East Onida, it's really hard to get from one side of the train tracks to the other side of the train tracks without walking on the road.
Yeah, you need to talk to, what are they? Whatever the railroad company is called. This is theirs.
Yes.
Yeah. They won't, we can't.
One side has like a 10-foot drop, and then the other side you have to walk.
Yeah, and we cannot put a sidewalk across the railroad tracks.
Okay.
And I would certainly think that would be really nice if they would allow that and even have pedestrian gates.
Yeah.
But that is something that we personally, not personally, but as a community can't do. For your own education, for example, we pay to have our water line go under the railroad tracks. We have to pay them manually for that.
Wow. Okay. Seems like a bit of a...
They're more powerful than we are.
So of the proposals, are any that automatically already exceed $50,000? And because those wouldn't be approved if that's the max that they do. And then, does this mean that based on the cost, only one of those? Or are there multiple that could be approved?
No, they'll only give you one at the most.
Okay.
And it's this committee somewhere else that decides what they like.
Right.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments. Could I have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, we're going to move into the regular meeting of the village board. Could I have a motion approving the village board meetings from March 21, 2024?
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, you're throwing citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to address the board?
Special presentations, is that something else?
I don't know what that is. Those are, special presentations are made in agreement with the clerk.
If I know somebody's coming ahead of time and they have a specific topic to talk about, that's what it's on. No, no.
Yes.
I don't know.
Jim Dale, 70, Oswego Street, Baldensville Center for the Arts. I did contract with Syracuse Shakespeare in the Park. Well, everybody knows, they agreed to the center's provisions for their performance, and so they are now contracted. They'll show up on the 13th to rehearse, excuse me, on the 11th rehearse, and then the 12th to perform. So we're good for one out of the season so far. Moving forward, I'm assuming at some point you guys have had an opportunity to look at and discuss as a board the conditions in terms of what we discussed.
Did you mail you sound today?
Not today, but we've met several times. So yeah, has there been any discussion at present?
I think we all agreed that we loved it.
We, I knew that one.
I just think that we wanted to wait until the new board was seated to make a decision. This is my interpretation.
Is that, is that where we're at? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I need to go back to my old board.
The thing about today has got to be hashed over by the soon-to-be-form Parks Committee.
Okay. Yes, sorry.
Unfortunately, Eric and Mary, there are two of them, and they already know basically what you've thrown out drastically.
And since Ruth sits on the subcommittee, she's in the majority, that's right. Okay. I have a board meeting coming up at the, our board meeting is always the same, the 4th Wednesday, and so if I can give them an answer by then, then they can proceed. But we are ready and poised to sign some contracts. And at our last board meeting, as is noted in what I sent you out today, the board agreed to earmark $20,000 for non-ticketed community events, anything that we put on that would need to be funded.
And something you and I talked about.
Oh.
That's in there.
Okay.
It looks like a stipulation that these, what are the sales have to be? And I tried to make it clear to you that that process with government acquiring them and the bid process, they may not be there this season, no matter what.
Oh, the sales. Oh, I'm sorry, I was accusing ticket sales with sales.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
S E I.
I L, right. Yes, I understand that. Yeah, yeah. And the board is aware of whatever process. I let them know. Any other questions you might have, I thought I'd give you guys an opportunity to ask me since I was here.
Did you send out an email today?
I sent out one, yes.
Sent something?
Today. I CC'd you and...
Did you get it?
Yeah.
I don't think I got it.
Okay, also text, did you take it just in case you didn't get the email?
I saw the text that said, and I also emailed it to you, and then I didn't see the email.
Yeah, I don't know. I will resend it forthwith.
Thank you.
Okay. But it is just a narrowed list and summary of the things that my board was looking for as we go forward. Any other questions for me while I'm here?
I saw your email, but I can't, oh, there it is. It was in my Gmail, I can send it to you.
Yeah, everybody's got a village email account, right? All the trustees?
I don't know little. I don't.
Okay. Okay, never mind about that. You would have one.
Right, I have a mayor@baldensville.com. You can send it to that.
No, I didn't, because, yeah, I just wanted to see. I didn't send it as a group to the trustees, because I wasn't sure if you all had the same, how do you distribute Jody to these guests, just to their personal ones, right?
What's that?
If you have to distribute email to coaches, coaches.
What I have on file.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Send it to Bruce at the Met.
What?
At Verizon. At Verizon.
Is it an old one?
That is an old one, but I didn't think I saw it in there either.
Bruce, you want to forward that on to me?
Well, I have to go, Eric, I swear I will resend it out to everybody as, yeah, I will. That's why you'll have it. Okay, thank you.
You've got that nice piece of paper that's got all our emails that were currently using, just scan and add.
Okay, it's now been sent to Max Correct's email, Eric's email, into Ruth, and they will get it at some point. They will get it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to, who, the annual appointments ahead of comments?
Yep.
Okay. I assume everyone received these?
Yep.
As those of you who have been on the board for the last couple of years, and for Donna's sake, we are, in old days, we used to read each line and have motions. We no longer do it, we do block motions. So could I have a motion to approve the annual appointments?
Make a motion.
Any discussion? We've added trustee Fryloo to the treaty's advisory committee. Is there anything else by anybody?
Nick might need to know what an intermissive, sorry, that is.
Who? Did I put?
It's kind of word.
Since he's asked me a couple of times.
Okay.
Good luck with that, Chuck.
We have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We now move on to committee appointments, which is different than annual appointments. Something I want to go over here really briefly, could I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
I want to go over, and I'm glad Bob's looking at this, what we determined was that over the past few years, we've had appointments of people that have left various boards and been appointed to what they felt was a seven-year term. Our code specifies that they're filling out the term. So Jody gave me the last seven years organizational meetings, and I was able to go back through and find out when people were appointed for when their term actually ends. And so we're appointing Terry King as the only appointment to the planning board, and James to the zoning board. Everybody else were clarifying when their terms actually expire. That's why everybody's listed here. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Could I have a motion approving meeting dates?
Moved.
Second?
Pardon?
Discussion?
So we're only having one meeting in July.
I'm glad you brought that on. We are not going to meet on July 4, however, if we determine after June 20 for whatever village business, we need to have a special meeting, we've got a three-week period in there where indeed we will try to call one. Don't anticipate that. I mean, we've done this before without a problem. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And finally, we go to utilities, they have a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second, for discussion, did our EBW charges go change though?
Fee schedule, things changed. Procurement policy, things changed. Do you want me to review?
I just wasn't sure what our rate was before.
Which? Which thing? Anything specific like?
The 76, 86 per hour, and then the 90s, in fact, overtime.
Yeah, that did, that did change from last year. Yeah, yeah.
That's adjusted as the contract adjusts people's wages.
Gotcha.
Is it under here? Was there where the water rate, I didn't see that.
Right up to that.
Okay.
Yeah, it is under the previous one, 3% and 4%.
And the fee schedule, Chuck, Tim, Jody, and I worked on revamping this to try and stop asking taxpayers to subsidize that as people that are, should be paying user fees from as insignificant as fingerprinting at $10 if you want to, our police don't normally do that anymore. Card fingerprints are obsolete. I spoke to Lieutenant Lockwood, and he said, no, please leave it in every now and then. But we increased the rate a little bit. We increased the, oh, that's something I want to do, on your fee schedule, I want you to adjust the engineer's rate from 175 to 185, since he told us tonight his rate's higher. This is after talking with our treasurer, we've been, when an engineer reviews plans for the planning board, our engineer has to go through them, he bills his hours. And then in turn, the developer pays the village that, and we pay the engineer. And when talking with our treasurer, one thing that we saw was pretty obvious, we leave out the administrative costs, the treasurer's time, people's time in processing this. So we're just adding a little bit to help cover those. There's some new things on here, things like solar permits that didn't used to exist. I don't know, probably hand it under a special use permit, something smaller. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that concludes that part of the meeting. We move on to trustees' comments. I'm not going to put you on the spot. Eric, we'll let you go first.
Just want to welcome trustee Fryloo to the board, and I'll stick to the agenda besides that.
I didn't want to speak to the election until it was official. I thought it was premature if I was to say anything last week. But now that it is official, thank you to everyone who voted, everyone who voted, specifically thank you to people who voted for me. Welcome, Donna. There's a lot of people I can thank individually, they know who they are, I thank them outside of this meeting, so that's all I have to say about that. We'll stick to the agenda after that.
Welcome to Donna, and just the agenda for me, thanks.
Pretty much the same for me, welcome to Donna, and the agenda, too.
Yeah. Stole my thunder, welcome to Donna. And everybody just be safe on Monday, it's going to be kind of chaotic around here, so just be safe on Monday. Outside of that, stick to the agenda.
Well, I just want to congratulate Mayor Stebbins, trustee O'Donnell, and trustee Shepherd on reelection. I look forward to working with them and with all of you and everyone out here on the business of this village we know and love. And I also want to thank the voters of Baldensville who came out in very, very encouraging numbers for the election on March 19, and let's keep that number trending upward. And that's it, nothing to add.
I didn't write down any comments, so I don't have any. Welcome to the board. Also, we'd like to pass along condolences, I understand you had a loss in your family.
Yes, thank you.
I haven't anything else to say. I bet I do, but I didn't write it down. I'll let you know in another 30 minutes.
You can fill half an hour, we can call Park.
No, that's okay. So moving on to department heads, to our attorney.
Just one comment to, welcome to the board, to trustee Fryloo, but I also would mention to you that if you have any questions, you've worked with my partner, Jamie Sudford, because you were on the planning board.
Yes, that's right.
But if you have any questions about it anyway, feel free at any time. And I would also suggest that you become familiar with NICOM if you have not done that already, and Jody can help you get a, it's great, and their meetings are fantastic, and the education that they provide is very good for the municipal government and some of the things that go on, and you can track legislation, that sort of thing. But other than that, I'll just stick with the agenda.
We have our clerk.
I just wanted to let the board know that on May 7, at 11 o'clock, the Tompkins Community Consortium will be here if anybody is interested regarding the insurance. So they will be here doing a presentation. I just need to know beforehand if anybody's going to attend, because they would like to know to have enough materials for the presentation, so.
Rep. Sessions of the union?
I sent an email to all of them, to Jason, to Zach, and to Adam, I talked to him the other day, to make sure that they are there, so, yes.
Can one of the personnel, they asked that question this morning?
I won't say why not, yeah, sure.
Okay, good.
Yeah. That's all I have, I'll stick to the agenda.
Moving on to our senior center coordinator.
I just want to let folks know that the Baldensville School District will be at the senior center on Friday, the 12th, at 10:30 to present on their budget, so if a daytime setting is better for you, come on over and learn what their proposed budget is. Also, I've mentioned this before, but I just want to let folks know that the Center for Aging Resources and Enrichment from Lemoine is sending occupational therapists again to do a special program on fall prevention. I can't stress how important this can be. It's free, you're getting professional folks, their expertise, and a fall is a life-changing event for older adults, and I have seen it several times in my work, so please take advantage of this in addition to the fact that we do already offer a fall's prevention program, which is more of a fitness program with a physical therapist. So check these out, they can be one of the best things you do for yourself, so.
They cover people on bicycles. Just asking.
Wear a helmet. And that's it, unless anybody has questions.
I would just like to add to Ruth's comments that even though the school board we're presenting there, that's not an option for us, because they'll be coming here.
They're coming here, they're coming here in the next meeting, yes.
Moving on to our treasurer up there in the upper left of the screen.
Just a couple of things. First of all, there's four agenda items that are financial on there, we don't need to talk about those unless you have questions during the actual agenda item, I'm happy to answer any questions on those. Second, two things are, I just want to point out, two significant expenses are hanging tonight in the abstracts. One is the snowplow truck that we ordered over a year ago and finally took delivery on, I think last week, and that's $137,772, and that's the money that we bonded for. So I just want to make you aware of that, so you're sure, so that, because it is a significant expense. And the second one is payment for the AED defibrillators that we bought, I don't know, a month ago. And that, those are going to be paid for with ARPA funds, so I'd just like you to be aware of that. That's $11,000, like $11,992 or something, I think it is. And I have a federal report that's due on April 30 of our ARPA status, and I will give you an update on the ARPA, where we are with all the ARPA funds before that time, before the next meeting, so you can have it for the next meeting, but we do have the money to do that. But I'd like you to know where we are, the clock is ticking on 2024, as I'm sure you're aware, we need to be committed, there's so many definitions, you know, the federal government, but there's so many definitions, I think it's committed for ARPA projects, and I think the definition of that is things like signed contracts, proposals that are, have been approved by the board, things like that. And then those need to be completed by the end of 2026. So it's not like we have to spend the money right away, but we do have to know what we're going to do with it and be headed in that direction. I think there's only about $100,000 left, and that may be a little less depending on one of the projects that Mr. McAuliffe has going on, but it's in that neighborhood, so I think it's doable for us to use the bonds, for sure. But I think we need to be deliberate about it for the rest of the year and get those things going, and, you know, get that sealed up by the end of '24. Unless there's other things, I'll stick to the agenda.
If I could add, Mark, last night I was panel discussion that included Ben Walsh and the county's finance director and the city's finance director, and when ARPA came up, it's not, it has to be allocated, as you pointed out. Those numbers have to be pretty good, because if we project what it's going to cost, anything that isn't expended after January 1 of 2025, if it comes in at less, we have to give the money back. So we'd much rather overextend and find the money than underextend. Also, if you're not here, two of the items, the truck, the snowplow is outside the building right now, Chuck brought it here for people to be able to see, along with the bucket truck. So unfortunately, you're not here, so you can't look at what your work is providing. So unfortunately, you're not here, so you can't look at what your work is providing.
Well, I have a bet going on with a couple of friends about whether or not they'll ever actually make us repay what we don't spend, because we're like peanuts, we're like little teeny. But can you imagine, like, New York City or Dallas or someplace like that that got probably a gazillion dollars in ARPA? It'll be interesting to see how it works.
The city and county both say their funds are all allocated already.
Right.
That's when I asked if they had any extra they wanted to give to us. Okay, moving on to our DPW superintendent, Chuck.
Okay, just quick on the two vehicles we have out in the parking lot. One of the plow trucks for the board, I didn't see it. It's, the snowplow is kind of changing in this region. It's, we're not getting the snow that we used to get. This is a smaller truck. They just started coming out with these. It's bigger than the smaller ones and smaller than the big ones. And it can be run with one man. We're fortunate to be able to get a hold of one of those, and we're not going to see it this year for snow, we hope. But it is, it's a great truck, bucket truck. That truck, that's fantastic. The new one is fantastic. The old one, Jeff Boardwell drove that all the time, I swear to God, he'd come in with three tires on that thing and say, "It's okay." I mean, that old truck was just a hold-in. We're gonna just have to push that off a lot, we're done with it. So they're very great expenditures. And the bucket truck, for anyone that doesn't know, that's our maintenance truck also. I mean, it does everything from cutting trees to Christmas decorations to all the work in the buildings, electrical work, anything that's going to be done. And this, the senior center of the water, the highway, he's out doing main replacing lights in the buildings. And that truck's on the road every day, and that was a great expenditure. I just want to think the board would forgive that for us.
It's far safer than ladders. Or I can remember in my early days on the board when
Oh, God.
a Pesh Inspector caught DPW people in a bucket of a front-end loader trimming trees.
That guy, yeah, that guy's in the clamp of the claw out in the air. Whoever blew them in when the guy cut here from OSHA, they were still doing it. And he both fell out of his car. There's no more of that. That's quite a few years ago, but
Yeah, it is, why?
No, I forgot what I was going to say. Brush is back, finally. We've been getting calls since November on brush. We started brush the first of the week. I think we got a little glitch on our, they reminded me on our webpage about when they are, we, we'll do it once a week, I believe it's for the rest of the month, and we'll straighten it out on the webpage when it does. But we start every Monday. We usually start up in Canwood, and then maybe Wednesday before we get to the other side of the river. But we have started that, and that's going well. The gentleman asked me today, and he says, "I understand you're coming twice a week." I'm like, "Say, what?" So, but we have started. So the Can Street Water Project has gone fantastic. The floor's getting put in over there now. It's all new electric from the pole into the building, all the breakers. There's no transformers in the building anymore. They're variable speed drives. It's just a fantastic upgrade. The skate is all up to modern, modern standards. The intrusion and cameras are all being brought up online. We didn't have any, we had some cameras, but not many. That's all being brought up online, and that's coming on great. Canwood Senior Center, we're going to have a meeting Tuesday. We hope to get going on that roof over there soon. The village had kind of $100,000 grant, and it's not going to cover the whole project, but the town's working to try to get us to do some more. So we're going to go as far as we can with the money that we have, and then we'll go from there. Other than that, unless there's questions.
There are none. We'll move on to our police chief.
Frank Forrester was the inspector's name, by the way, who observed that. He was also a deacon in the church up at
I think he got in trouble on that.
See, I think he did help you guys out a little bit, yes. Back last week, there was an incident that garnered some media attention. A young woman, unfortunately, had contacted the 911 center and ended up coming through the village of Baldwinsville while driving. And one of our officers was the first officer to observe her. They ended up following her all the way over towards Saltve, where this young person, as I said, unfortunately, took their own life. But one of our officers was intimately involved in that incident. And it just kind of goes to show that you don't know what you're going to be dealing with coming to work that day. And this officer had to deal with a pretty serious incident, being one of the first people on the scene and one of the closest people to the vehicle when that occurred. So we certainly send our thoughts to that young person's family and friends that are going through that. And we've provided a great deal of support to our officer, who did really an outstanding job throughout that incident as well. You'll know that the Attorney General's Office looks at all incidents involving the death of an individual where officers are involved. So our officer met with members of the state police to provide a detailed statement and report as to what they did and what they saw and what they attempted to do to render some aid and things along those lines. So just to advise the board of that and how that all transpired. Other than that, that's all I have, unless there's some questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to pending business. Motion to authorize Mayor Baldwinsville to execute and submit an application to the county of on-site for a 2024 community development block grant.
Make a motion.
Second.
For discussion, I will add that the county graciously, thanks to Bob, the deadline date was March 29th. But when we quit and they let us know, like, on the 21st, after our last board meeting, we had to have this public hearing or else you can't submit it. So Bob was in touch with them, and they gave us an extension so we could have the public hearing and still apply. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that out. New business. Item A, motion to declare the following items as surplus to be auctioned off by the DPW: a Coates tire changer, serial number 0002512969, a Keller power hacksaw, and a 1999 Chevy bucket truck. I saw that drive by my office today.
It's still on the road. We gotta get this one going.
In motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not sure that a tire changer should go if he still can read the serial number.
Well, if you have anybody old enough to use it, or younger, true younger.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Motion to accept the resignation of planning board member Donna Freyloo effective April 1st, 2024.
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Still got time if you have a statement.
All in favor?
Aye.
I bet Donna's not voting on that. Or maybe she is. Maybe she's emphatic. I want off. Item C, motion to approve an application for the correction of village taxes for the property located at 80 Brown Street. Tax map 014-point-dash-03-dash-08-dash-dot-zero. Let me adjust that up. For the 2024-2022
No, 25.
25. Tax year
No entry.
In the amount of $1,212.80. Omitted tax amount was calculated incorrectly.
Both.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Motion to approve the application for the correction of village taxes for the property located at 2 Curtis Ave. Tax map 007-dot-dash-03-dash-11-dot-zero. For the 2024-2025 tax year, in the amount of $652.95, omitted tax amount was calculated incorrectly.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Motion to approve an application for the correction of village taxes for the property located 21 Charing. Cross circle, tax map 006-dot-dash-04-dash-57-dot-zero. For the 2024-2025 tax year, in the amount of $1,475.38, omitted tax amount was calculated incorrectly.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, let me ask a question.
Yeah.
How does that happen? Who calculates? Is that?
Okay, so for two of them, and we got the tax rule from Lyssender when they send it over, it didn't say that it was a trust. So normally, when there's a sale of a house, you know, it's going from Smith to Jones. But there was no indication on the tax rule that it was going from Smith to Smith, that it was just a trust. So the tax, the omitted tax was calculated and put on their taxes until they called. And, you know, I talked to Teresa at the Town of Lyssender, and that's what happened. The other one, what happened was it was not based on the village tax. It was based on the county tax. So there was two separate, like, taxes that were on there that shouldn't have been. So they were doubled on their omitted tax that they were charged. So that's where that correction is. And we have one more coming that I just sent the county the paperwork. So we have one more coming in the coming weeks.
Is this money received and then to get back? Or just we never got it?
Well, two of them were caught beforehand, so they just paid the difference. So there's not going to be any money exchanged. One of them was paid by a mortgage company. So when that is, after we, you know, pass it tonight, then that money will go back to the mortgage company. Because by law, Teresa at Lyssender said that if something happens, it goes back to the mortgage company, and it's an escrow. So that's what happened.
All set?
Question?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
I guess.
How do we know that our error is in that tax rule?
I mean, I don't, I would have to go, I would have to go through it. It's not in the tax rules with the omitted tax.
Right.
It's not on the tax rule. It was, it was a clerical error.
So how would we find that people didn't bring it to your attention?
I would have to go through, I would have to go through them all. Yeah, that's how.
Can I have a motion to approve the village treasurer being authorized to pay for the articulating telescopic aerial device, also known as a bucket truck, from the general fund in the amount of $148,615 per quote DJ91005766 from Altech Industries? And further be resolved that the general fund be reimbursed by bond, which the village will begin the origination process pending this approval?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Questions? You can ask the treasurer about the articulating.
And I just, I want to remind you that I sent out a copy of a more current resolution from Attorney Baldwin about, you know, the probably more legally states the resolution there. So that's really, that's really what you need to be approving. But the concept is we're paying for it from the general fund because it was kind of a quick purchase, and we don't have the time, or we didn't have time to get a bond together in that amount of time. So when we do get the bond, we'll pay the general fund back.
Yeah, the general municipal law allows you to advance funds from one fund to another subject to repayment. And a lot of times, that's, that's like waiting for state aid to come in or from taxes or something like that. So that's kind of what we did here. So it's really an advancement of funds from one fund to the other, and then subject to repayment when the bond funds come in.
Okay. Mark spoke, I have your whereas thing. Do we need, do we need to pass that, or is this adequate, do you think? I have the motion you wrote up also.
You can adopt that one and then just put that in the minutes.
Put this one in the minutes and adopt the one that's, okay. And Jody will correct the, the one for the minutes to say truck.
Yes. How long is the one? It's pretty lengthy.
It's a page.
It's a page.
Do you want to read it? I'll pass it to you.
I take this as the general idea.
Yeah, it's, this is the legal ease for
Well, yeah, only because it is an advancement, just in the event that a controller comes in and sees something and they want to know how it was done. I think I just did that, so it's a little bit better explanation.
Yeah, it's a little different than what we normally do.
So in knowing this is going to go into the minutes as part of the official record, you're going to be approving that also. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay.
PDF time.
Item G, motion to approve the encumbrance, the encumbrance be created per the attached document, encumbrance 2024-dash-04-dash-04 for 2023-2024.pdf. Snicker, snicker. All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, motion to approve budget modifications for the current year as outlined.
H.
Okay, well, we could just do I and then come back. Okay, H. Motion to approve budget modifications for the year ended 2/29/24 as outlined in document budget modifications 2024-dash-04-dash-04 for 2023-dash-2024.pdf. Dot.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to I.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve budget modifications for the current year as outlined in document budget modifications 2024-dash-04-dash-04 for 2024-dash-2025.pdf.
Motion.
Second.
All questions? They have questions. The treasurer's right up there. He'll answer them. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Item J, motion to accept the resignation of Nancy Sullivan as neighborhood advisor outreach coordinator effective April 18th, 2024. Any discussion?
Somebody fell in their spot?
They will. Yeah, Ruth is working on that as we speak. Any questions? All in favor? I wasn't going to do this. Chuck, do you think I should, Bob, should I put a motion to amend the, whatever it was called? Now we gotta find, a salary compensation? What did you call that, Mark? Hang on for a second, folks.
I'm sorry, was that question for me?
Only partly. It was kind of to give me time to dig through my stuff. Oh, silver here. Ruth has it. I'd like, could I have a motion to amend the Village of Baldwinsville compensation schedule for 2024-25 for the following positions? The codes enforcement clerk, the DPW clerk, and what was the other one? No, that was, those were the two.
Sparktime water, too.
No, she's set. Hers is set.
And Michelle is information aide. That's her official title.
Okay. I didn't think they'd know who that was. I wasn't going to use names, but we have, the purpose for this is we have three clerks with similar levels of responsibility and discrepancy in what they're being paid by $2 an hour from one to the other. $2 an hour, one to the other. And they've all been gone through enough employment that they're out of probation and is trying to level things up.
Ruth, even though two are part-time and one's full-time?
The full-time one's made up of two part-time positions, though. Yeah. So they would all be at the same rate, at the $20.87 per hour. If you're willing to make that motion.
I will make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Have I confused the bit you presented?
I have a question, because you seem like you're not happy with that.
I'm just not, I mean, those are part-time that have been here less than a year, and they've already gotten a raise. I'm just, I mean, we have the full-time person, you know, a full-time person, even though it's two part-time positions, I just don't, I don't see where that's warranted to bring them up.
So because it's two part-time positions, does that person not get benefits either?
No, they do. They do, they're full-time.
But the part-timers don't?
No, they don't.
So there's the difference there. I just thought it needed to be talked about, because
Well, sure. My concern is that everyone, and we're discussing our quality employees, that are doing well in their positions, and having this discrepancy is troublesome to me. And I think eventually it would be troublesome within the morale of the workforce.
But, well, this could be troublesome, too.
Apparently.
But I think if we could draw some conclusions that do differentiate the person who's working two part-time from somebody who's just working the one, that they're getting benefits, are they getting retirement, they got a 401K, they got all that stuff?
Yeah.
That the others two don't. Vacation, too?
And the other two don't, aren't?
So there is definitely an advantage to the person that's technically working two part-times, that they're getting more than the others.
According to most labor statistics, they're getting about 32% more because of benefits.
Yeah, I think if the, if the rules are similar, they should be getting similar pay on an hourly, on an hourly rate. It was appropriate to me.
I'm still looking at Mike Scoll, and he's our labor relations
I'm just thinking, because I'm thinking how I would feel if I was
Then we could table this and not do it, so now you'd feel more comfortable.
I wouldn't mind having it tabled. I wouldn't mind whether it be you or you have the discussion with these people and take the temperature if it's going to bend somebody's nose. I mean, here we're trying to give more, but we don't want to create another problem.
Well, that and two, if you were to fill any of those positions with a full-time person, this also brings them up level with their counterparts. Because you've set, the rate is for the position, so you've got two part-time people. Assume that there were no part-time people, they were just full-time in both positions, that would seem to make sense to do that. If I can comment on it, two of them come under me, and they're both doing a fantastic job. I mean, my secretary at home does full-time work. I mean, she's just, and the other one we're talking about does a really good job, and they've been here a while. And then now we have a new person that's doing the two part-time jobs that just came on.
Was doing a good job, too.
Yes, there's no, there's no issues with that at all. But it just, it's very much warranted, in my opinion. I work with them daily.
Let's think about it for two weeks, is it going to
No, I don't think so. My knowledge, no one's aware of this, other than you and I. I don't know if we've discussed it with them.
I have.
We can really throw it, can't get it, and we can make it retro to today's date, if we decide in two weeks just to make it more work for you.
Perfect.
Yeah. That's fine.
Okay, so do we need a motion to table it? What's the process?
I'll make a motion to table item K.
Okay.
It's a second, I guess. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, something I didn't do in mayor's comments, I would like to call an executive session for a personnel issue with no action anticipated afterwards, if I could.
Maybe print them out?
Hmm? Yeah, I guess it's L. Do you want a letter for it?
Is that because of item K?
No, 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 has nothing to do, has nothing to do with that. It's much more of an informational
Okay, I'll put on the executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Yep. Perfect.